...to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, public notice of the meeting has been given by the Board Secretary in the following manner: posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building, mailing written notice to the Courier Post and the South Jersey Times, and filing written notice with the Clerk of the Township of Washington on July 3rd, 2025. Roll call, please.
You're up.
Yes, my lady.
You're up.
It's okay. Mrs. Hartong?
Here.
Mr. La Liberty? Mr. Serrano? Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Baker? Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Hi. Didn't get the chance to say hi to you. Ms. Clancy?
Here.
Hi. Ms. Chilla?
Here.
Hi. And Ms. Kuzempo?
Here. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Bless you. Thank you to facilities for setting this up in a little bit less of an intimidating work session format. I like this, actually, for our work sessions. This would be good every time we have a work session, actually. Yes, it is how it used to be. I remember the old tables. The old tables with the tablecloths. Okay. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak? No? Okay. Can I have a motion to close to the public? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know how you want to do that. So moved in second. Just put Linda as first standing and then a second again. Okay. All right, so we're going to start out with, well, we're already through this entire thing, with our New Jersey School Boards Field Service Rep, Dr. Lori Bandlow. Lori, would you mind, if you don't mind, giving us a little bit of your background? I know you have experience as a superintendent, and I don't know that everyone knows that. So, is that mic working, or does she have to turn it off?
Yes, I want to thank your tech team. They did a great job in helping me prepare for today. So first and foremost, on behalf of New Jersey School Boards Association, we want to thank each and every one of you for your dedication and commitment to the children in Washington Township. This is a wonderful district. So let me tell you a little bit about me. Thirty-eight-plus years in education myself in both New York and New Jersey. Started off in New York State as a kid, working with my sixth-grade teacher, as an elementary teacher. Taught there for about five years, and then I ended up moving to New Jersey in Westminster Plainsboro as a teacher, middle school science, math, and elementary ed. Then became a school administrator there. So I have served as a elementary principal, elementary teacher, favorite part of my career, middle school principal, school superintendent in New Jersey. I've been in every type of socioeconomic district you can imagine. I did that on purpose. Why did I become a teacher? Because my great-grandmother was a wonderful second-grade teacher in Montgomery, New York, and she was my inspiration. She continues to be. So when I was in New Jersey as a superintendent, I served in Paulsboro for about five years, and then I went back up to New York to finish my career up in Brewster, New York, as a superintendent, and I was up there for five. Came back to New Jersey School Boards to work because when I was up in New York, they had great, you know, their New York State School Board Association was excellent. So was our superintendent association. But what I missed, and what my board missed, was the wonderful services that New Jersey School Boards brings to boards throughout the state. And I'm here now to work with you. Terri is off with John. Terri Lewis, your former FSR, she has retired, so she and John are probably flying someplace elegant and exotic right now. And I was fortunate, when I first started in July, I was serving Burlington and Ocean Counties, but then when Terri retired, I was lucky enough to get Camden and Gloucester County. So I will be with you every step of the way. I'm here to support your work. Is that enough, Julie? You want any more about me? You have any other questions?
I just thought it was good to give some comments.
Okay, perfect. I want you to get, and each of you, board members, each of you have my business card. I am at your service. If there's something you need to look for and you can't find it on the website, if you just want me to be a sounding board, anything you talk to me about is held in confidence. New Jersey School Boards is here to serve you, to make you feel, you know, that you're being supported in every way, shape, or form. So do not hesitate. So tonight, what Julie and I spoke about, and thank you for pulling the retreat together, and Julie and I met also with one of our other field service reps, Michelle Kennedy, to talk about, how can we get started here? So what we're going to do tonight is I'm going to talk to you about the new board self-evaluation tool. That is the first step, and you're in a good place. There are other districts right now, Swedesboro, Gloucester City, Cherry Hill, that are just finishing up their board self-evaluation. So you're in a good place right now. We could start earlier next year if you want. But the first thing that we're going to want you to do before we begin to think about goals, because I know you thought about some preliminary goals, but we're just going to put those to the side right now. And that's what I told Julie we need to do, so don't blame Julie. It was me. I want us to go through the board self-evaluation first. So I'm going to give you an overview of what it is first, and then we'll talk a little bit about it as we go through it. And then we're going to talk about goal-setting. And then I want to come back for another retreat. It can be in August. It can be in September. Some boards do it in September, because I know the summer's very busy for everybody. But I will make sure that I come back, and we're going to do something a little bit more fun when we get together for the next one. Tonight's going to be a little bit all business. But when I come back, we'll start to do a little bit of team activities, working together, and then we'll also start to dig into the goals. So, any questions so far, before we get started? All right. So, New Jersey School Boards, just this past January, we implemented a brand-new board self-evaluation tool. This was put together by folks just like yourself, board members, throughout the state, that really felt we needed to do a better job with the tool. When you do the board self-evaluation, it's just going to be the board. Sometimes the superintendent will do it as well, but I want this just to be purely all of you, so you can see what you're doing great and what are some areas you want to work on. All right? So this tool that I'm going to walk you through, God bless you. On our district website, there is a webinar. So after tonight, you have the PowerPoint in front of you. You can also get it electronically. If Janine can, you know, if you could send it to them also electronically, both of the PowerPoints after tonight, you'll have that at your fingertips as you go through the self-evaluation, so it's easy for you to walk through. And stop me at any time as we go through. So, one of the things that trustees throughout the state really wanted to see was they wanted it to align more with the chief school administrator evaluation. In the past, the ratings were commendable, good, everything along the bottom line. But now we have aligned it much better to meet your needs, board members, with what the superintendent's evaluation is. So you'll see these are the different categories and the ratings that you would use throughout the observation. Now, one of the things on the website I just want to key you in on is there is a webinar. If you go into the search bar on New Jersey School Boards' website and just put in "board self-evaluation", you'll find the webinar, and you can do that at your leisure if you feel like you need more training in it and you feel like, "I need more than what Lori gave me." Okay, so the new feature is if the boards, now, some boards don't have goals. You should have goals, but unfortunately, some boards do not. So what happens first is the board president, and in this case, it's Julie. Julie has to log in first, and Julie will put into the system your goals. And what will happen is, like, I met with Swedesboro, like, "Oh Lori, we didn't save any evidence to..." It's okay. You're going to get better at this every year. And by you getting better at your board self-evaluation, it just makes the entire system run better. So Julie will put in what the goals are. Some boards will have three goals. Some boards will have up to five goals. If you have evidence to support it, just like your superintendent, whenever they put their goals in, they have to, throughout the course of the school year, put in different evidence to support their work. It's like a full, living-color document, so you see what's actually happening. So if you had, one of your goals was to complete the chief school administrator's evaluation by June 30th, because it has to be completed by statute, you put that in there. What's the evidence? You can just, you know, show the evidence from your meetings and that you can put some hyperlinks. If, Julie, don't worry, if there's no hyperlinks, if there's no goals this year, all you do is you just check off that the board didn't have a goal this year. That's okay. All right? But we will definitely have some goals next year, because we're going to work together on that. Now, the board self-evaluation, so if there are no board goals in Washington Township, then, board members, you won't see this page, okay? But if there are board goals that you had this past year and Julie has put them in, then you're going to rate those goals. The board will complete the superintendent's evaluation, these are just examples, by July 1st. We did it. So I'm going to mark off "achieved" as a board member on the board, that we did that. The second goal, for example, was, "The board will continue our professional development in 2025 in order to achieve certification." There's some hyperlinks that show the evidence, so you, as a board member, can say, "Well, I really want to look at this and see, did we really do this?" Okay, satisfactory progress has been made. And then the last one is, "The board will review and revise our board bylaws as required by New Jersey QSEC." Again, in this case, there's some evidence, so I can say as a board member, "We didn't achieve it yet, but we're making good progress." Or, "We've made little to no progress." It's so important that you are honest when you are doing this, that you pour your heart and soul into this for the kids. What are the things that we're doing right? What are the things we're not doing right? It's all about your kids here. Just remember that. Do not take it personal. Okay, so these are the standards that the folks who created the new evaluation wanted to have. These are based off the National School Board Association standards throughout the country. These are what other boards look at. I was just at a conference in Tampa. It is amazing what other states are doing, and we are doing some amazing things in this state, too. So it was really good to hear that we're on the right track here in New Jersey. In fact, we are the number-one, we should, number-one education across the country, so don't forget that. So here are the areas you're going to be looking at as a board member: vision, mission, goals. I know you had a strategic plan back in the day. This could be something you want to think about for the future. I'm not trying to sell you on New Jersey School Boards. We do do strategic planning, and I'd be happy to come in and talk to you about it, but there are other companies that do it. So please just keep that in the back of your mind, because you definitely, definitely, and as a former superintendent, I could not do my job if I didn't have a strategic plan. You have to have a roadmap, because otherwise, you're wondering, "Where do I put my money? Do I put it over here, or do I put it over here? What do I want my cabinet to be working on? Should it be working on this, or working on this?" When I went up to a district in New York, I felt like everybody was spinning different plates all over the place. Once they had their strategic plan, just like Washington Township had a strategic plan. This is a great district. You will know where you are going to prioritize for your kids. Vision, mission, goals, policy. These are all areas that boards have to focus on. We don't get into the weeds. We are up on the balcony. Just like in Hevitt's book, Leadership on the Line, the board is up on the balcony. The superintendent comes up to the balcony, overlooks and makes sure that everything's going nicely, but the superintendent is the one who goes down on the dance floor and makes sure that Janine is doing her job as a BA, that her director of human resources is doing his job. Who's the only person you hire as a board? Who's the one person you hire? The superintendent. That's it. The superintendent is in charge of hiring everybody else in the district. So remember, policy, big part. Accountability for student achievement is the other area, because we're all about student achievement. We're all about kids. Making sure kids are reaching their dreams, no matter what their dreams are. Governance team, relationships, resource management, community leadership. So these are the standards that you will use for your board self-evaluation. Okay, so here's just an example. I'm not going to go through every standard, I promise, but this is what it will look like to you when you go in there, board members, to do your evaluation. So for standard one, mission, vision, mission, and goals. So it talks about the standards, the statement, and the really small writing up here. It says, "Our board is committed to a shared vision of our district's future. Its mission and goals to move our district forward that are focused on student achievement, guide district strategies, and reflect community values." And then you, as a board member, for each of the standards that I just showed you from the National School Board Association, you'll grade on each of those areas, okay? So as you go in here, you're going to be digging into different things, like demonstrates through our vision, mission, and goals, our focus on student achievement. Are we exemplary? So be honest. Where are we right now? Because it's all going to be about growth. And what are we doing really great in Washington Township? What are some of the things we really need to grow on? Proficient? This is an area we need to grow? Totally unsatisfactory? Or not observed? And that can happen, because when we do the chief school administrator evaluation, new board members that get on the board, they say, "I can't comment on this because I haven't observed it." So if you're new on the board and you really haven't seen it, you can just check off the "not observed" piece. So, in the past, we provided an open-ended statement for board members, but the board members across the state wanted it to be more focused. So for this, for each of the standards, you're just going to write down, "What is our team's greatest strength in this area? In this particular focus area? What is our team's greatest challenge or opportunity? What is a really good opportunity that we have that we're not doing right now that we really should be focusing on?" So you'll see this for every single standard. And then in the very end, each individual board member, you're going to talk and evaluate yourself. So you're evaluating you at this point. How am I doing as a board member? Am I making it to every meeting? Or is something in my life personally getting in the way? And that happens. We're all human beings. Things happen. Are we complying with state requirements, including training, financial disclosures, conflicts of interest, and the Code of Ethics? As a board member myself, I have to rate myself: exemplary or proficient. So this is where you really have to do a little soul-searching and be honest. No one is going to see your rating for this piece but you. You'll all be able to see where everybody's at and how everybody's progressing. So a little bit of peer pressure to get it done for Julie, so she can tell me, "Lori, it's time for you to compile it and put it together." But this part is only for your eyes only, all right? And then it'll all go into the final board evaluation that you will get. So at the end of the piece, this is the very last part, which is kind of a little bit open-ended. "What do you consider to be the board's greatest strengths that we can build from? No matter what you are seeing in the news about Washington Township, there are a lot of great strengths in this district. This is a great district. You have great kids here, great families. What are we doing as a board? What are the greatest strengths that we can build from?" I could probably name five of them. I've named a couple already. So think about the good things. Put the negative stuff to the side. "What governance areas will we need to focus on to further our work as an effective board?" You're doing it right now. I'm giving you so much credit for reaching out to saying, "We need a retreat. We need to focus on, as a board of education in Washington Township, how do we work to get better?" We're going to evaluate ourselves as a board. We're going to get that information done. We're going to let Julie know when it's complete. We're going to tell Lori to compile it and come back. And when this is all finished, and we set a new date together, because that might be something that you want to do either tonight or maybe, you know, through an Excel sheet that Julie sends out to see what dates you might be available in August or September, you're on the right track. Then I'm going to come back, compile it, and I'm going to share with you the results. I'm going to share with you all the great things that you think we can build on together and some of the areas that we need to work on. And that is going to help us set board goals. All right? And your superintendent will have district goals, which we'll start to talk about, too. So this is a really critical area for you really to really take to heart and think about, you know, "How am I doing for the kids?" And then at the very end, this is what will be the compilation in each of the areas. Only, as I said, only board members can see their own report, so don't worry. It's totally confidential, whatever you put down about yourself. The tracking report, all the board members can see who's finished it and who's still working on it. Okay, be patient with each other, because people will have vacations in life, so, you know, just be gentle with each other. And then the compilation is when you give me the word, I'll put it together, and I will bring it in. Each and every one of you will get a copy. And you will see how you rate. Now, the numbers here, and I'll talk to you more about this when we get together and you have your final report in front of you. When you see, and we tell boards this all the time throughout the state, when you see numbers that are scattered, like if there's numbers like over in this one area over here and they're close together, those are boards that are working really well together. When you have boards where you have numbers all over the place, like it doesn't seem like there's any consistency, that's where we have a lot of work to do together. And that's okay. That means there's areas that we have to work on so that we're all working together as a team and a unit. And there are some great examples of boards throughout the state that are doing just that. And if some of you wanted to go observe a couple boards, that's fine, but you are also doing that by being here today, by working hard to try to pull everything together and to move forward. So you'll get a rating. I'll go over all this with you. And then you'll also get a listing of what everybody marked down as the greatest strengths. So you're going to feel good about a lot of the things that are happening. And then what are our team's greatest challenges and opportunities in this area? So this, you'll have a sheet like this for every single one of the standards. All right? You'll get a copy of this in a PowerPoint that Jadeen said she'd be happy to send to you after the meeting, so you have that, and you also have the hard copy. But there is a webinar online on our site, as I said at the beginning. Just put in "board self-evaluation," and it'll come up. And if you have any problems, reach out to me. You have my cellphone. If you get nervous or you get stressed about something that you're, you know, "I don't know what to put for this. I can't tell you what to write down," but I can certainly coach you through it if you want. All right? So, questions on the board self-evaluation? The process? Those will... It's a system that puts it together. It's a numeric system that our IT department created. So they really pull everything together. And we double-check the numbers, because once in a while, we notice that something might have come up wrong. But that's how they're put together. There's a formula. Any questions?
Like, for this board, this example, there were eight board members that completed it, right? Because everyone, eight.
Right.
So that means, for example, A, four people think they're doing exemplary, four people think they're proficient on that evaluative standard. But you can see, when it comes to B, it's a little more off. Well, actually, this board needs some help, too.
Yeah.
Because they're kind of split on a lot of things.
Right.
So it should equal nine.
Yeah. And this isn't bad. Like, this board is pretty, like, if you're in the areas of about 3.0 and above, you're doing pretty good as a board, because you're seeing where most of their scores are over to the left in the exemplary proficient area. But in this one area, you can say right away, "Okay, we need, maybe we need to work on this area here." Using relevant data to engage in continuous district improvement, which is something that many boards have to continue, all of us have to continue to work on. So there will be things that will be, pop out as strengths, that you'll be like, "Wow." And there'll be areas that'll pop out that you'll be like, "Wow, this is something we really want to maybe think about." So by you, each of you doing this individually, it's going to start to get your mind wrapped around goals. I'm going to ask your superintendent or your acting superintendent to come up with district goals, because it is really critical to the system that the district goals are, and we'll talk about that in a minute, are the goals that you have together with your superintendent. The board goals are on top of the pyramid. Those board goals should support the district goals in some way, shape, or form, whatever you feel is appropriate for your school district. Every district is different. Julie?
Is related to timeline. I can't remember. How long does it take usually? Or do you suggest that people take to fill this out?
It depends on the board. I've had some boards, I think Swedesboro, they were about four weeks. Usually about, usually about four weeks. Or some will go further. It depends upon the time of year, too.
And then generally, would, do people normally do it in January after reorganization, or February?
No, this is the time. Right now, many boards are starting to do this right after the chief school administrator evaluation. Boards are starting to work on the board. Yeah, I'm going to go over that in a minute. We'll talk about that, because it depends upon when your elections are in November, right? Or April?
They are, and I'm thinking by the time we get our goals together, it will be September, hopefully.
That's okay.
Then you'll have a new board coming in a couple months after that, which I think is probably why it's very important that the district goals align
Right.
to the board's goals, so that we can support the district.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that, because it's important that there's goals before those new folks come in, because they'll know where you guys were at and where to build from and what strengths to, you know, continue. Does that make sense so far? All right, so you're okay. You might feel a little rushed. We'll get through it. All right, and Julie, every step of the way, I'll be with you, okay? You won't be alone. Any questions on this piece? Okay? You are, Julie, we'll start it. Go ahead, Julie, you want to make a come?
I was going to ask you, can we start it? Can you send this to us tomorrow?
All you have to do is you're going to go right online. You're going to go into "board self-evaluation," send me an email. You will be able to start it right away. If you have goals, you'll be able to put those in there. If you don't, you check off that box. But you just reach out to me. I'll help you.
Do you think a month is long enough to, for everyone to complete? I think it is.
I don't think it's more than a month.
What did you say?
I think it's more than long enough.
I think it's too long.
I think it's too long.
I prefer to do it like two weeks.
I don't know everyone's... I think two weeks, and then that way you really have a date.
Make it a priority.
How does that work for you with that, with board, with district goals?
I feel like if you have an abbreviated timeline, we have to work on it briefly. We're talking a lot about meetings, so I feel like we could come up with some drafts.
Absolutely.
And if all of you can, I'd like to see you do it more quickly than...
Is everyone okay with that? Two weeks? Two weeks, okay? This is Connie Baker.
Hi, Connie.
Just the self-avowal. So then how would that work then, after the two weeks and everything's compiled? I mean, two weeks does seem like a short timeline for them. For us to evaluate ourselves, you know, is one thing, but that seems short for them, so...
Let's see how we make it.
Okay.
Just keep, we can move it if you want, but two weeks?
It sounds like everybody's saying that. This isn't the amount of time.
Two weeks? And just call me, whenever you need me. I'll, to coach you through anything. And then once everybody's finished, you let me know, and then I'll compile it, and you'll get a copy. I'll send you a copy. And we'll get, the board will all get a copy. I can get that copy to you guys ahead of time.
Great, and then you'll come back and talk to us about...
Yep, and then I'll come back, and we can decide another retreat date. It could be August. It could be September. There are boards that are just doing, having their retreat in September for goals, so don't, if you can't do that, all right? We'll work it through. But Julie, just check with me the couple dates, though, because I have a lot of different meetings coming up.
I do have a question.
Yes.
So we get the one for us to complete through a board email?
Yes, you want, everybody's got to log in into the New Jersey School Boards' website? Yes. Yep.
But we have to wait for Julie to...
But you have to wait for Julie to finish it first with...
You don't have your login. I got mine on New Jersey, I got my...
So Janine is the master. She is always the one who puts the information into the census at school boards. Let her know, and we can, and Janine, you know, you can always email the call center. You have that, and make sure that we get everybody hooked up, so no stress. We're here to support each and every one of you if you run into any roadblocks along the way. All right?
Are you feeling okay? I don't want to be doing stuff that may pose a threat for you.
So we have access to our administrative team during the summer. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, we're doing another training in Cabinet. We've been doing a lot of, we have had a lot of conversation and review of existing issues and things that we want to grow upon, so I feel confident that we could take what we already have and come up with a draft.
Absolutely.
And that's the key word, and that's good, a draft, which we'll share, and we're going to talk about that in a minute, so, okay. Any other questions about the board self-evaluation at this point, before we move to the next topic? All right? You know where to find me, too. All right, we're going to move now to goals. So I'm going to ask the amazing dream team here, the tech team, to get us ready for the next one.
You had sent us suggested goals, suggested goals based on the things that we sent you. Do you have that here?
I didn't bring it on purpose. I'm going to tell you why. Because of the board self-evaluation. Because they were good goals. Don't get me wrong. But I really think that it's important. If you want, I will bring copies of them. But I think it's important that...
We can wait, yeah.
Because you have to really look at your evaluation and start from there.
Just so everyone knows, I had like a whole matrix of everything that people say at meetings. And I sent it to... I, and I sent it to chairs of the committees, like put these, this stuff into your committees. Yeah. And Lori took like one look at that and was like, you're not going to get anything done.
No, no.
It needs to be more. Let's take that back.
And that's, that's why I said blame me. Because I felt like, I said, you know, Julie had this great Excel sheet. She got information, but you got to do your self-evaluation. See where you're at. Because there's going to be some things that you might have put down as a goal that you're already doing great. So you're in, you're doing all the right things. You're doing what really great boards do. Okay. So now we're going to talk about goal setting. And this is really, really critical. So after, when I come back, the first thing we're going to do, and you'll get a copy of the compilation ahead of time so you can look at it, digest it, and you'll be like, what is this? I'll explain it to you. So just hold off your questions until we get back together at the next retreat. I'll go over all that with you. And you'll be processing a lot of this in your mind before we get back together and talk about goals. We'll go over the strengths, the areas that we think that we want to focus on for the future. And then we'll talk about your goals. So at that time, I'm going to ask Annette, and thank you so much, Annette, and your team for saying that you can come up with a draft. It can just be a draft. There, I'm going to let them go first after I go over the self-evaluation and share the district goals with the full board. So you can take those in. What is the cabinet thinking of for the district that the district really needs? We're going to listen to those first. Because the board goals need to support that. We need to support that in some way, shape, or form. So here we go. We're going to jump in here. So board goals are the foundation of governance. That is what every board member has to do. And every board member does great. And that's where we drive you crazy with all those mandatory trainings you have to take. Gov. 1, Gov. 2, Gov. 3, am I done? But governance is your job. You are elected officials. You are put into your seat for a reason because the community trusts you and puts their heart and soul into your work on behalf of their children. So setting board goals are the key to, the foundation of moving the district forward. It helps with continuous improvement. This is why I'm such a big believer in strategic planning. Because having that five-year roadmap makes this job so much easier. Because with strategic planning, you get folks from both inside the district and outside the district to help you to create that roadmap. So when you're setting your goals, you know that this is what everybody in the system wants. And this is what everybody, it's okay. And this is what everybody throughout the community would really like to see. Continuous improvement, effective communication, accountability, and a cohesive team. So when you are working on goals and you have that good foundation, it really helps to move the district forward. And when boards are doing this and working together beautifully, it is the most amazing thing to see what happens. When you honor the chain of command and you're able to start to work on goals and move things forward, it, the kids just benefit tremendously. So talking again, that you need to make sure that you're defining what the clear goals for student achievement and classroom instruction are on base, you know, based on a vision of high expectations and shared beliefs and values. So that's where you're going to be listening to your cabinet when they come to us in that second retreat when we get together. And Stephen, nice to meet you.
It's a pleasure.
And they're going to be sharing what they're, what they feel that the district goals need to be. And they're asking you to partner with them on it. And you'll have questions. You might tweak a few things, but that's okay. So you set the goals, you make the plan. We get to work and we stick to it. We stick to it because the kids in Washington Township are worth it. And we work on reaching the goal. And then we make sure we celebrate in some way, shape, or form. So board goal development is what we will be talking about after we listen to your cabinet share their district goal draft. So here is a good graphic. And many of you, forgive me if you've seen this before and you already know this, but I just need to go over this carefully. The board goals are just for the board. That is what you will evaluate yourself on again next year. And we could start it earlier so you're not feeling so rushed. Process, procedure. Those are, those are the terms I want you to keep in mind as we start to develop those board goals. Those are what you own as a board member, as a board team, that you will evaluate yourself on. The CSA goals, those are just for the chief school administrator. Most superintendents will have their own personal and professional goals, whether it's, you know, making sure that they attend conferences throughout the state, throughout the country to bring back best practices and research to the district. Those are just personal, professional goals, getting a doctorate in education. District goals are owned by the board and the superintendent and the superintendent's team. Okay? The superintendent, of course, evaluates his or her team. But you all will evaluate your superintendent based upon the district goals. And those are the areas that you'll see in most strategic plans usually focusing on those goals. Your, the programs in the district. What is it that we need to be focusing on? Is it our math program, our language arts program, our science, our CTE? Instruction, staffing, professional development? Those are all things that facilities, finance, we have a bond referendum coming up. What's our funding like? What funding do we think we're going to be getting from the state? So those are some of the district goals that the cabinet, after this meeting, is going to get together and deliberate and come back with a draft for you. And they will report first before you start to think about your board goals. But you'll have that compilation just to kind of get a sense of where you're at. Merits were something, not too many superintendents do that anymore. It used to be when, when they had, had put a freeze on the salaries throughout the state, many superintendents did miracles, which were specific to, you know, district scores. So that was something that was a contractual goal that would be set between the superintendent and the Board of Education. I had done that years ago. But I'm not, from what I heard, not too many superintendents do that anymore. Okay. So here's the cycle you guys are thinking about. And, and this is an example, okay? This is best practices. Don't totally get stressed and locked into it. But the goal setting starts in May, June, and July. All right? So that's where we are right now. So that's okay. We're in a good place. So we could start earlier next year, as I said. And then from those goals, now your, your cabinet team is going to come up with district goals. They're going to have action plans. And I'll give you some action planning sheets. They probably already have them. But they'll have action plans that they're going to have to put together for those district goals. And they should report out to you on the progress of those goals throughout the year, which we'll talk about in a little bit. The board will also have action templates. And I'll, I'll share a copy of that. And it's in that packet right for you to look at. So once we set that board goal, we're going to come up with, you're going to come up with, how are we going to meet this goal? What kind of resources do we need? What kind of actions? What's the evidence? And that evidence is going to be what your board president will upload next year into your board self-evaluation. So you're really seeing whether or not you made progress on the goals that you put together over the summer. All right. So then the action plans developed and the goals are approved. It says July, September. As I said, there's many boards that are still working on them in August and early September. So you want to make sure that you're sharing with your community at some point, September, early October, what are our goals for Washington Township as a board for this year? And you should mention them several times throughout the course of the year. So the community is hearing what your goals are and what you, what you're doing to accomplish it. Many boards will actually, and I think Julie, you probably said at the leadership summit. Did you want to add something you saw at the summit? Yeah. Right. It's, it's so important to remind your community that, so you're being very transparent. You're showing your community that you're being accountable for your work. And you're just reminding them. Because not everybody's at every meeting. And you're just, I mean, it's so, so important. And the same thing with reporting out on the progress of the district goals. Some, you guys probably do this already, Annette. I'm not sure how many times you might report out to the board about different things. But it's important to tie those into your meetings so that the board and the community hear what's the progress that's being made on the district goals. Many boards and cabinets will present board goals and district goals at the start of the year. So everybody sees, okay, Washington Township has a focus. Here's what we're going to focus on. Yes, Pat?
Isn't that why having a board calendar is important?
Yes.
And isn't that something else we should be working on developing and implementing?
We have a, a draft of a calendar at school boards. That's really important. So if you can't find it on the website, let me know. That kind of helps you keep on track of things. And it's, it's difficult to do that all the time. Julie, did you want to add anything?
Right. And shouldn't that be?
I think something we could fix together at the beginning of January. But it feels difficult, like it needs to be something very basic. That isn't too complicated. Like I had a spreadsheet that was too complex. And then I bring in a little bit of that was too complex. I think going with a little checklist.
Yeah.
And if that could go on the website, too, so the public can look at it and see what we're doing each month. Gives us some accountability.
Yeah. That's, that's a really good idea. And, and the community has to understand sometimes things will come up that might put us behind a little bit. Things come up that we have to deal with. But that, that's the basic calendar of where a board and a district should be at. All right. So we're here now. In November, January, March, and June are just examples of times that you should be reporting out. Or you can read them at every board, every board meeting for your board goals. But at least the cabinet, the district team should be coming out twice a year, three times a year, whatever works for, for the team, four times a year. And then we get into the CSA evaluation process. Okay? And that's where those district goals are listed in your chief school administrator's evaluation. And there should be evidence put in there just to make sure that the board is in about April or May. The CSA will put those into the evaluation. The board will offer input like in May. It has to be done. The board should be able to get together with the, usually boards will finish it right around that time in early May is a good time to shoot for. I've had some boards that were a little bit later and they were panicking. So try to get it done as soon as you can. And then the boards will get together first. You have to rise the superintendent. And then the board will get together in executive session to go over it first to be sure that everybody's on the same play, page so that when you meet with your superintendent and follow your attorney's advice, we, we do not, we cannot give you legal advice at New Jersey School Boards. Only your board-appointed attorney can. But once your board-appointed attorney then says, okay, you're going to rise the superintendent again, have that superintendent come in, you'll go over the evaluation and make it a really good productive conversation. Okay? So this way you're prepared. All that should be happening, I would say definitely before June 15th because by statute, it has to be done by June 30th. And we just, you know, a lot of times, board presidents will reach out to New Jersey School Boards and say, do you have a copy of the last couple of superintendent evaluations over the last three or four years? We do not keep them. We cannot because it's personnel. They are purged from our system. They're gone. You should keep a copy on file with your board attorney. Okay? Or your board secretary's office locked up. So just make sure that those are the things that you need to make sure that you have happening. Now, the written summary needs to be done by June 30th and filed and signed. And then we start the cycle again. We'll go right into that board self-evaluation, February, March. It says February, March for the April election. But you guys are in November election, right? Okay. So October, November for November election. So then we can start that cycle again. Makes sense? All right? Don't get too tied up into, I have a board right now that's really panicking because they, they feel so behind. I'm like, just let it go. Just do the best you can right now. But don't panic if you're not right within that box. Okay? There's always things that come up that you have no control over. So what can our board do to be more effective in areas of responsibility? So this is just a, a list of different areas. And if you don't mind, I just want to read it to you just to get your thoughts going a little bit. Should any of last year's goals be continued? Policy development, oversight, monitoring, governance structure? Do we have a good governance structure? How's our communications, internal and external? Do we have a good communications plan? Do we have a strategic plan for our communications? Do we have a communications person that helps to make sure we get the word out to our community? What are our strengths? What are we doing really well? Think about the great things that you're doing so the community knows there are still wonderful things going on. And there are wonderful things going on in Washington Township. What can we focus on to enhance our performance as a board? Do we need to work together better? Do we need, we have all different types of training. When I come to you at the next retreat, I'll bring a folder that will have all of our updated training so you can take a look at it yourself and say, hey, we really need Lori to come in and do something on conflict resolution. Or we need Lori to come in and do something on the board's role in finance. And I'd work with Janine on that. So whatever you want, I will tailor it to what your needs are. All right? So I'll bring that copy. What can we do as a board to support our district goals? What additional training did our board self-evaluation indicate is needed? Okay? And then what PD would assist the board in improving our governance skills? All right? And there's all different types of professional development that we offer. Yep? Let me go back.
Could you go back to the other page? Because it was something that I was thinking about.
Yep. Absolutely, Linda.
It says we should have a written summary by June 30th. I don't, is it done? Have we done that? Obviously. Yeah. But who would we evaluate? You had so many questions.
That's a definite board attorney question. Okay? It's probably something you want to talk to your attorney about.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah. Definitely, yeah. Yeah. Make a note, make a note about that. Okay. Any other questions? All right. So I'm going to go back. We did our starting points. Food for thought. Get the juices flowing. Start thinking about what we're going to do. And then these are some examples of what some boards do for goals. I'll just give you a minute to read through that. So those are just board goals. Those are what some boards really feel that they needed to do better. That was based off of their board self-evaluation. So those were created. There's some boards who forget to do their superintendent evaluation. Don't do that. And it happens. All right. So goals. Goals should be broad. Outcomes that you intend to achieve. you want to make sure that you put in there, just to keep yourselves on track. Activities, details about how the objective will be achieved by listing specifically what will be completed in a specific timeframe, okay? Reviewing the board's policies and bylaws, what's, you know, how are we going to go about doing that? So start to think about what's really important to you. And then we're going to put your new board goals in here, and we'll put those together when we get back together. And here is a copy of the template I was talking to you about, all right? I can send this to you electronically, or send, you'll have, you have a hard copy in front of you, but I can send you a cleaner copy if you want to just draft it. But I met with a district in Burlington County that had awesome board goals, and they were meeting those goals, but they, they were upset with themselves because they forgot to do this. They're like, Lori, we didn't do an action plan. So we feel like we did them, but we really did not feel like we were thorough enough, and we really didn't cover as much as we wanted to with a particular goal, so we revisited them in the middle of the school year, so that we can make sure that we put those, put them down and then get back together again. So you need to make sure you have all of those components. And next steps, everything we've talked about, okay? Developing the goals, implementing action plans for the goals, and the board and superintendent establishing dates for frequent progress on both district goals and board goals. And I want to, again, thank you for all the incredible work you do for your children in Washington Township. The board does not get paid. This is the ultimate volunteer activity that you do, and just know how much New Jersey school boards appreciate everything you do, and the community does as well, and the children. So I'm going to stop here and see if you have any specific questions for me before we get together again.
Are you able to come back at some time if everybody agrees? And I know I went to training last October about the role of the superintendent and the role of the board.
Absolutely.
I think that would be something I'd like to see happen if we have time in the next month, a couple of months.
Absolutely. Yes.
Scott. The role in finance. You mentioned that, my ears kind of perked up, because I think that's going to be a big focus in the coming months. That would be a great one.
That's great, Scott. And then Janine, you and I could work on that together, because I did that with some other BAs, and it was really important, because it's, and no question is a dumb question, because there's a lot of things that come up that we don't really understand. Connie?
Where can we find, with Charlie Mueller, the BA in residence? My understanding is that he does a lot with school boards, with the finance, and how it can help school boards understand this whole finance situation. Is there a printout on the different workshops that he gives, or should I just call him?
Connie, if you want, you can email me, or you can email Charlie, and.
Yeah, I have his number.
You can.
But is there something set out already that, that school boards can see, the different types of things that are being done, or no?
He, he has some activities on the website already, some upcoming professional development. He does come to every county meeting. I encourage you guys to come to some of the county meetings that we have, too, because Charlie will come out. But if there's something specific that you want, he is more than happy.
I know he told me he goes to school board like ours.
He will, he will. If there's something specific, like, if we decide we want to do something with school finance, and you want Charlie there, I can ask, he can come in virtually if he's, if he can't make it here, in person, we can absolutely do that.
One of the key things is that, this is the second year running, that we were in a big hole, but we really never talked about it much throughout the year. So maybe there's some things that he can help us with as to how we can, we can get more information on a regular basis.
Absolutely. He's a great resource, so definitely. We'll make sure we do that. Any, any other thoughts?
Julie, for the days of today, I feel.
That's what I was going to repeat, repeat again. So Lori and I work together for the county school boards association, and the president of that association is April Miller. She's the board president in Pittman. And she, no, I've never met a board member that knows more about school finance than April Miller. She really knows a lot. Elaine, I think you went to the, the thing in Pittman with her? That's what it is? And then the VP for Legislative Relations is Becky Ione, who is, is an attorney, and I'm the other vice president. And so we did our programming. That's what I set out. The September meeting is a legislative update. So Charlie will be there, right? But also Cody Miller, our assemblyman, and I believe Bill Moen, who's Legislative District Five. And they're trying to get some other people to come out, so that we can ask the legislators, like, what's going on with state funding? And so I think that for all of us administrators and board members, that's a great one to attend. It's going to be a panel.
I think the September.
So that's, yes, September, September 30th.
Yep.
It's a joint meeting with Camden and Gloucester.
Yeah, please come.
And that's the legislative update. And that's at Adelphi's. And then November, it's just Gloucester County, and we're hosting that here, I hope.
Yes.
Well, we have been.
It's a good thing to do.
We've been voluntold to host that. Janine is looking into it. There's no expense to the district to do that, just so you guys know. But, and I had a recommendation for someone named Dr. Tracy Severns to come. Oh, my gosh. I absolutely loved her podcast, listened to her podcast, and she's great. She actually wrote a book in which she tells 68 stories from administrators on things that they learned from that were failures. So she was like, you know, I don't like to go out to these conferences and just hear about, I invented, you know, this great thing, and everyone should do it. She's talking about failures in the book. So I thought she was really great, and she's focused on academic achievement, and I have the three Rs listed there. Someone emailed me about, oh, that was you, Pat, about the superintendent and board relations. I believe the three Rs covers that. Does it? Roles, responsibilities.
Three Rs is usually for new board members, so they under, it's roles and responsibilities.
Okay.
So, but we could come out separately to do that.
Okay.
Totally. It's a little bit different.
Okay. But that'll be in Washington Township. We're hosting that. So hopefully, everyone can go to that. And then the February one is virtual, and then in March, we split again, so it's just Gloucester County. That's the eighth grade dialogue. And then May 7th is Teacher of the Year. That's also a joint county. So I sent, I did send that an email. We could maybe put that on the board, put them all on the board calendar.
And if you didn't, and all those dates are on our website, though you'll, you'll see them on the website, but Julie, that's great.
Just another follow-up, since you're here.
Yeah.
And, you know, with the school boards, have you heard, that stay past the budget, right? Have you heard anything on the tax levy incentives? There, there are a number of school districts that applied, some already got their money, and some like us that haven't received anything. Do you know anything about that?
Connie, I have not heard anything about it, but send me an email, send Charlie and I an email. You can CC me on it and send Charlie, just so I make sure that you're taken care of and you get your question answered. But nothing yet.
I, I have just a suggestion. Last time we had ethics training, not everyone could be here, and I think it was helpful, the one exercise, I think it was Bush Law did it. I don't think it's a bad thing to revisit it again, just like they did an exercise, is this a board, you know, is this something we're responsible for versus, I think it was a helpful exercise when they did it, and I think a lot of people didn't really know the answers to the questions.
Yeah, I remember being here in the audience, listening, Carol.
Yeah, so I think that's something.
Do they do it every year?
Yeah.
Do it every year? Yeah, I, I think we could probably do it more than once a year. Right. I mean, just in general.
Justing.
Yeah, I'm suggesting, because I know Terry Lewis used to do it.
I've, I've gone out, I, we usually come out in January, once the new board's elected, we'll come out, and we can do that as well.
Yeah.
So here's a thought. You can think about this. You don't have to answer me now. Because you want to do all these great trainings, one of the other things you can think about, and, you know, we can have Charlie come in to talk about finance, because he's so great with that, too, is becoming a certified board. Where, but it takes four years, you don't have to have a lot, but you would spread out the training. Of course, we do the ethics training every year for boards, because it's so important. But you've spread it over four years, and there's other components to it, so I'll put some information into the folders when I come back again, because if you're going to be, like, tonight, I've been here, what time did I get here? Was it about? Five o'clock. All right. So you will have one credit already. You have to get 16 credits over a four-year period, in addition to some other things, which I'll go over with you when we get back together. But that is a really great way to do all the different things that you want me to come in and do with you and other folks that you've mentioned already, but also it's a really great way for the, for the board to show the community how serious you are and how purposeful you are. So I think that's really great stuff. And I know Ralph's gone through all this stuff a lot already, in the past, so.
Yeah. Oh, and I just want to thank everybody for coming to this in the middle of July, especially you, Lori, and for helping us with what we're working on. Are there any other questions for Lori? Of course, I know you have somewhere else to be, and we have, we're going to do our committee work. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
And thanks to the tech team. Thank you.
I think I'll put us into executive for committees, so that way we, or we could just, actually, we could just close the public meeting, because after committees, we're leaving. So, okay, we'll do that, then. That way, we can move around. Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still move.
Second?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now you'll just tell us where we're going.